For those joining us, this is the January 3rd, 2023 school board meeting. I failed to start the recording prior to the minutes of public comment and not the minutes, but the bills, but we will have the minutes posted for the meeting. And we're just hearing in the presentation related to potential rough round. And go ahead, Mr. Trump.
I thought it would be worthwhile to take kind of a half step back, looking at the discussion that we had back in December 12th. This is a starting point, so I'm going to kind of jump back to that. Pull this up here. There'd be two documents here I wanted to share with you. We started off looking at kind of a couple of different scenarios, one being probably more conservative in terms of what we were thinking or assuming, which would occur at the state level in terms of state funding going forward. And that was kind of scenario one, which is kind of a status quo based on history of the $200 per student kind of increase in revenue cap, realizing we haven't had that out for two years. And then kind of a middle scenario, which was kind of a little bit more than that, was around $250. And then the third scenario was kind of looking at a scenario that was representative of Governor Evers' proposal that he put forward back in November, probably being the most optimistic look. And the discussion we had at that time was kind of starting with scenario one, we had our base projection.
Something interesting Bill and I were discussing this morning, and Bill pointed out, I believe the QEO was passed in 1993, I believe.
Correct.
That was the year I graduated from high school, the first budgetary year was that subsequent '94 or '95 budget year, I believe.
That's first year, right?
And the per pupil increase when they, when they started the qualitative economic offer, that's what that QEO was, Governor Tommy Thompson put it into place. And prior to that, school boards could set their budgets to whatever their community wants. So that's why in Wisconsin, you have wildly different spending per pupil, because it was based off of what you spent that year per pupil before you went into the QEO. And Elkhorn was not spending a lot compared to where that state averages. That's why our spending per pupil is lower in the very bottom portion in the state. And since that law was implemented, we haven't really passed a significant referendum to exceed that QEO level. So we've been very dependent upon what the state gives on a per pupil spending. Well, in 1994, the dollar amount, which think about it, 30 years ago, was pegged to the CPI or the inflationary rate was $194 per pupil, 30 years ago. So when you're looking and then you just think from an inflationary standpoint, over the years, when the QEO was put into place, they would increase that dollar amount per pupil based on what the inflationary rate was, up until, I believe Doyle's last budgetary cycle, he actually dropped that down. And then when Walker came in, they quit even attempting to keep up with inflationary rates and basically had the perspective, you need more money, go to referendum. And so that's where even at $200, that's where I wanted to give some of that perspective that we've been, you know, in the good years when we were given $200, that doesn't even come close to keeping up with inflationary rates. That's why Wisconsin's gone from when the QEO was put into place, it was 11th in the country on, on spending for education dollars. And now it's projected after this last budget cycle has been factored in, will be about 35th in the nation in spending on education. So that's why is that per, to give you that context, 30 years ago, $200 would have kept up with the inflationary rate based on school budgets back then. So I found that interesting when I'd never, I didn't realize that this one may go all the way back in 80s. All right, go ahead, Bill, sorry.
Well, maybe just to add quickly, I think it's worth maybe sharing too how that looked. That gives you a sense of that yearly increase, going back to that '94, '95 school year. So you've got that $200. And at one point at this time, it was based on the March to March change in the consumer price index, we still had some type of predictability of what that yearly increase was going to look like, really until we had, which would have been at 10, when we had the reductions. And then since that time forward, it's really been kind of all over the place.
Bill, can I ask you to share that screen? I have the two other pages printed out, but I don't see the, the one you're talking about right now.
My screen, Paul?
No, I'm sorry. So go to, go to my tab, Bill, and then click on the share screen button to the left, one to the left. Yep. And then your entire screen.
I have 110 and the 27 summary sheet printed out and the financial analysis, so I can follow along by that, but I can't see the screen.
On that, so can you see the screen now?
Yep, now I can see it, thank you.
For saying something, so, all right.
Years ago, to give some context, I asked Senator Nass, who's wonderful, always come in meetings, talk to superintendents and so forth, we host a meeting here. And I asked him, I said, you know, couldn't you just peg the per pupil increase to the CPI like the state's done with the tuition rate for the universities? And he thought out, said, no, absolutely not. They've worked for the universities because of reduced what their, because universities were going above what CPI increases were. And he said, basically in a nutshell, it's not a direct quote, his school districts need more money to go to referendum. That we're not, it's not even going to entertain the idea of backing revenue limits to consumer price limits.
So based on the $200 increase, we also talked about wages next year, inflationary adjustments of about 4%, our health insurance at 10%, utilities, we're seeing increase of about 5%, and everything else about 3.5% for next year. And then you see that carries forward for the following year, wages at 3.5 and then wages at 3.5 for the third year. And then that gives you some estimates in terms of the budget deficit that we'd be seeing the next three years based upon those estimates. So with that information then, as we kind of look at, I'll pull this up here. We started plugging in exceeding the revenue cap numbers, just to kind of see how that began to balance out on the budget, what the impact was for taxpayers. So again, no final decisions were made, but kind of how we left the discussion was the sheet, which included a $4 million increase in year one, another $3 million in year two, and another $2 million in year three. So the combined impact was $9 million over a three-year period, which could be phased, yeah.
That wasn't the sample question, though.
It was not, that was the discussion we had.
Because you had a total of seven.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're talking two different things, but it's a great question, Jenny.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going back to our discussion of the board meeting on the 12th.
Previously.
When we were kind of plugging numbers together.
Okay.
Because it's kind of how we left it.
Okay.
Okay.
It wasn't any consensus or conclusion, it was just, that's kind of where.
I was trying to catch up against it.
Yeah, no, I'm glad.
I got at the numbers.
Actually, I remember these numbers.
Okay.
And then when I saw the question, I thought, oh, that's less than what I thought we had discussed.
You could, yeah, you could just put whatever, whatever number we decided.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, no.
Just plugged in numbers to kind of show what they look like on the questions.
Okay.
Yeah, don't interpret that as a judgment or opinion.
Great, sorry to interrupt.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
I think, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Bill.
So, so the impact then, over a three-year period, even if we use some debt service to offset the impact, end up being about $297.
Yeah.
Just under $300, does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that's kind of where we were at at that point. Again, there was no consensus, there was no, you know, this is what we wanted to do, there's just more where, where do that look? The other thing that came up as a question, and I think, I remember I was just here, I was going to ask a question. Was kind of like, well, what would this look like past three years? And of course, it depends on if you change the bargaining scenario, but if you assume for a moment that the revenue cap is going to $200 a student, which is less than 2%, and our expenses are about 4%, the deficits never really go away.
Right.
So after three years, you'll see that the numbers start going the other direction, even after a $9 million, exceeding the revenue gap.
And we faced that for the decade that I've been here in the school district. Every year, we faced a projected deficit of about $800,000 to $1,000,000.
Yeah.
And we've closed that in large part because of the open enrollment revenue. If we didn't have the open enrollment revenue, we would have, had to have gone, because we've been talking about, we're going to need to go to a recurring referendum for years, but we've been able to delay that, delay that, delay that, with that revenue being generated. I don't know how much more one space we even have in our, some of our buildings have space, but how many more students and families are able to drive the kids? Some of our buildings are, are full to labor credits, pretty much, there's not very many grade levels that could even take an open enrollment student over there. So that's, I think in all these scenarios, we budgeted a zero student increase. So it's a little conservative on that, but it's not, that's an unknown quantity, yes.
You had to fill the gap of all the kids that are open enrolled that are graduating out every year.
Right, each year.
Because every year, that's more and more.
We have almost 100.
That is true. We have this 12 coding class that, great.
That last year was like, sure.
Just to get back to even, we need, this, this year, I think it was 115 new open enrolled students just to get to even.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, so anyway, this is where we, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing that with us.
In these scenarios, there is the flexibility in this spreadsheet. If there was something that the board wanted to look at and tweak, like, you know, the insurance projected rate increase or salary and wages, we can tweak that and it will calculate.
Yeah. What are we expecting for health insurance? Because that 10% seems very low.
10% was a negotiated rate.
That wasn't easy.
I would, you know.
Yeah.
But we don't, right?
Yeah, because they were originally projecting, what, 50%?
Yeah, based on our, the other side's first look at, based on the clean history.
Correct. But we were able to negotiate time.
Well, originally it was down to 29%.
Okay.
Because of our cap that we had in place with Humana, and then also the wellness component, we reduced it because our staff participated in wellness program.
Right.
Then we ended up going to the high deductible, modify that, that got us to 10%.
Got it.
That's a combination.
Okay, right.
And what did you think based on our, our own history with, with our staff?
Right, right. I know we have our staff.
It's going to be a battle of, we work that each year.
Right.
Come up with the best scenario we can.
Right.
Sometimes it's going to be, okay, you either switch your entire deductible or combination of both, so. I think the 10% is, it's a minimal.
Yeah.
It's a, I mean, I think there's ways to, there are ways to adjust the plans to get to hopefully, you never know, if you're wrong, you never know. But I think there are ways to adjust the plan so it's the 10%. They come back with something up there. Like I said, switching carriers, which we don't like to do with as many employees as we have, it's a lot of paperwork, but in the long run, we don't have much of a choice because.
Right.
A bunch of lies or not, they'll just absorb huge increases and, you know, maybe like real people definitely not help insurance. Can we, can we put it back to, let's put it back to the numbers that you originally had there, which was what, 3, 2, 1, is that the original you had there before you changed?
4, 3, 2.
Yes, 4, 3, 2.
Yeah. Yep.
Before we adjusted them. Because we adjusted it just to find out, okay, what do we have to have here to make it zero positive, so it's not a negative number for the next three years?
And as a reminder, if the state budget does come back and they say, yeah, we'll give the Evers dollar amount, the, the board, all this does is give a maximum levy amount that the board is authorized to go up to.
Right.
It doesn't mean that the board has to go up to that.
Right.
It almost goes back to the days before revenue cap, where the decision ultimately was pressed with the board up until the amount that's authorized by the electors.
Now, in the past, when they passed, was in the category, they've said, well, if you don't levy up to the maximum, you don't get, so now we, if we didn't levy up to the maximum, then we would have to give, number one, we'd have to not levy the maximum, and then we'd also have to give back the money for the category at times. They had that in there.
Yeah, originally, the revenue cap was, was designed that way, where if you didn't max out the revenue cap, you lost it and never got it back.
They, they quit doing that.
I was going to say, that's gone away.
It's gone away.
They corrected that several years ago. We kind of issued that in the period.
Yeah.
But no, we don't have to levy all the way up to that number if it passes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So that's the number, go down a little bit to where the, yeah, right there.
About the scenario.
So this is the scenario where, okay, we don't have a deficit in any of the years. Your original numbers were, I swear there were 3, 2, 1 or something like that, which left a.
Because I think we.
Which left a deficit.
The first two years did.
Year two and year three, is that right?
Right, because there was about $800,000 deficit on the first year, I think.
I think.
We were going to use, use debt.
Yes, we were.
That was, that was looking at the impact in terms of the tax rate.
Oh.
That's where the $800,000. And again, I changed these numbers on the sheet, I'm sorry.
So you've increased that, that service?
Correct.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And, and what I was trying to do here, let me, let me share with you the changes I made from that sheet.
Okay.
I, I reduced the third year increase in wages from 3.5% to 3%. Simply thinking three years down the road, inflationary, I don't know how we can sustain 70% for that length of time.
Correct.
But it's targeted at 2%. So I would say that was the change.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see even the 24, 25 come down to 3. Or even 2.5, you know?
Can you just break? What I would do here is to, I'll just kind of highlight a few of these as we change.
So they know they changed it.
One of the things to take into consideration as, as well, how that health insurance and wages are all part of that benefit package.
Right.
And so some of the decisions, like this year, we were able to get down to that 10% with, there, there was a minimal impact, but I believe there was a slight cost to staff as it related to their portion of what the premium cost is. So as health insurance goes up, it'll also eat into their salary compensation. And part of that too, is if the board says, well, we can't, because there isn't collective bargaining anymore, if the board says, you know, 5% is all we can do for health insurance increase and do your best plan design modification, then those expenses get passed on to whichever employees are participating in that. So at, at the end of the day, it all comes out of that scene, those two factors are very tightly related, for those who take the health insurance.
So one of the scenarios, I was kind of working from maybe the reverse of looking at the impact and trying to reduce that to be less than $100 per year. And to make that work, and again, you get to a point where you're, you're kind of just playing with numbers.
It sounds a big deal to fire.
What was the big deal?
I think you're really changing the 4% that I am.
Yeah.
Yeah, 3, 2, 1.
Yeah.
That's what I like, 103, and you're trying to get under that $100.
Okay. Yeah.
And increasing the amount of your debt service offset would have the impact of about $96,000 for $100,000 in the first year, 86 the second, and 49 the third. The combination would be still $231. The total amount, though, is $7 million, not $9 million.
Yeah.
And what did that do to the deficit?
Yeah.
The deficit goes up, you're a little bit over a million, then you're about $1 million in the third year.
And what's, okay, what's the numbers, you're, you're back at the seven.
I've got, I've got 3, 4, 3, 2.
It was.
Health insurance is 10.
Can you?
Scroll up, right?
Do you want to plug it in? Can you plug in? It is the same amount, though.
Correct.
It adds up the same, but the spread out was just different.
Right.
Yeah, it's, never mind, the amount's here, not the same.
Okay, it's only $7 million right now.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's six, we actually need more.
Right.
Right, and even if you change the mix here, let's just, if you put seven here and zero and zero.
Yeah.
You're still going to end up at the same.
The dollar is the same, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're doing them out in different years because we're trying to get up to that 100, like you said.
And I'm not saying this is correct or this is what you should do. I was just trying to look at what's maybe a more palatable.
Right.
To get to.
Put, well, especially do digits, put the, put the referendum to zero. That we don't, we don't pass, it doesn't pass.
Oh, and all three years?
Yeah.
All three years.
Oh, I don't want that, so. It's going to be a bad scroll, though.
All right, so that's where.
Yeah.
That's kind of a story. Now, adjust the, can you adjust the wages negative?
Negative?
Can you just?
I'm not, I'm not just doing this to, I'm doing this to understand what.
What, how they work?
If it doesn't pass, we would have to be the.
Well.
Because, because here's what, here's the thing, is 80% of the budget isn't salaries benefits. So the only way we're going to balance the budget and the referendum is to.
Is to, is to reduce the staff.
Right, either through.
So to start there.
Or asking this.
Yeah, I know, you'd be like, we're.
I put zeros at the start. And then to maybe get to that. Now, I still got health insurance at 10%, so.
Do we leave negative 5%?
Before we dig that, though, I'd just like to see maybe smaller increases, you know, rather than four.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree. I'm just doing this, okay, so that would probably be, we could probably make that work, 5% if we had, it's not the best, it's not the solution.
It's a horrible scenario.
I'm just saying that if we had to do something.
Right.
That's where we would be sitting, is a negative 5, negative 5%.
And we have to say.
If you wanted to balance those numbers, you'd have to go.
You'd have to go more, but I think we could, we could reduce our fund balance and cover those numbers, or just through.
Correct.
Other things, saving money here and there, you probably think they were, because I've seen, like I said, over the last decade, I've seen 800 million.
Right.
We've made it up throughout the year.
Yeah, I think it was 800, yeah.
Different ways.
Yeah.
Because the numbers aren't budget conservative.
800,000, not 800. Yeah, anyway, she meant.
I get it.
Yes.
So I heard maybe plug in a different numbers, though, than the four and the 3.5 and the three.
Yeah.
So what if we went to 3 and then 2, 2?
Yeah. Yeah.
And then let's see what the deficit is. Still pretty high. Now we'll go to the referendum, put in the 3, 2, 1, which is 6, 9.
I think we started at 6, 9, 10, 11, 12, because.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Because I think that third year, we were too tight.
Yeah.
And I think you said.
Okay, doable?
No, still doable.
No impact on the taxpayers? Oh, we don't?
Oh, we're under $200.
That's where I think we're at.
Well, I think we have to be clear on that too, when we're communicating, that's based on a $100,000 assessment, and there's really no such thing as $100,000 in Elkhorn. The median home in Elkhorn is $249,000 right now. So I don't know if you want to break that down to the median, what it would approximately be, or per thousand, so people have a, a more accurate, because when they see that number and then the real number comes through, the reaction is not going to be very favorable. They're going to feel like we're used car salesmen. The other thing with, the other thing with that is it's, it's a cumulative cost, so it's, it's just like interest rates. It, it's additional each year, and when they only see one number, they think that's it, but they have to realize that it's year one plus year two plus year three, that it's going up, it's not just that, that one there. And a question that's been asked of me out in the public is, when is one of our referendum balances being absolved?
You mean our debt service, Paul?
Yeah, for, for a past referendum, because their concern is reoccurring, open-ended public trough, opposed to can we just bridge it until funding has balanced out, because, I don't know, what, what the earliest one would be, the middle school?
Middle school just was figured out last year.
Okay, when the next one would be paid off, and can we just hurdle to that point and then reevaluate? And, and I said, I don't have the answers, I, you know, it's way above me. And another concern is households have to have rainy day accounts, and I believe that's what our, our fund balance is. And we have to show due diligence in our expenditures when we basically are carrying a 11, 12 million dollar rainy day fund. We need to dip into that a little bit too, to assure them that we're conscientious about the dollars that are there.
I, I think the reason I used $100,000, Paul, is simply because it's an easy factor for people.
Right.
For taxes.
Yeah, I, I understand, but I think when we go to speak to the public, we have to very clearly tell them, while we're doing our basis on 100, the reality is, you'll have to look at your own to see the impact, because that's just an easy way to do math. But the realistic is, for you, that's not going to be the impact, it'll be greater, you'll have to figure out on your own what it's going to be.
Oh, but I look back at our previous referendums, we, we also created kind of a, a chart with a calculation where people could plug in their own hand, their own home value, and it would calculate the tax impact.
Okay, I'm just saying, from what I've heard, I just want to make sure that we don't get labeled as used car salesman.
Oh, there's so many.
83% of the voting population probably lay losses in used car salesmen.
I think Paul's point of, that we have the losses and things, is probably, I mean, Ed said the same thing last week, and I think it was a good point. But the, the thing is, is we don't want to run the fund balance down too much, because the fund balance is there from major. Um, but the, the thing is, is we don't want to run the fund balance down too much, because the fund balance is there from major emergencies too. I mean, we can, it would be pretty irresponsible if we were to run that down to the point where we don't have a fund balance, because we have to have money to run a district.
Then in fact, our bond rating, building taxes, or short-term borrowing, that we're gonna have to.
Yep.
This is our first year that we need to.
We didn't do the short term.
We haven't had to do a credit line.
We don't want to go back to now we're paying you a ton of interest, because we get paid.
Right now, we're not, two years ago.
I mean, do you really want to go back to three banks and find out, yeah, that they're gonna charge us a lot of us?
I'm okay with running the fund balance down a little bit, but I'm not okay with running it down significantly, because it takes a long time to build it up.
Yep.
If we were to run it down to dangerous levels, I could be, like I said, it could be a decade before you could build it back up. And even then, you might not be able to. And then we might have some sort of catastrophic failure where we have to, I'm not saying something dangerous, but we might have to come up with major piece of equipment that fails, like or whatever.
Yeah, I don't want to go back to three banks.
Pay for it, we have to borrow it, remember paying interest.
Right.
Right.
So either way, there's costs to anything that we do.
Yeah.
Right, and, and I mean, I understand that as well, but, you know, as, as people speak, they're like, well, in a personal, uh, situation in our family funding, um, we have a rainy day fund, and once that's expended, we have to extend ourselves to a home equity line of credit and things like that. So they're looking at it from the scenarios they've lived already, and they want, and they want, uh, us to look at it the same way. And it's, I know it's different, and I understand why we have to hold a balance, but we also have to be careful that ours looks so grandiose compared to what the general population in our community has right now.
Right, to a business, not a personal home finance. And when we're employing almost seven hundred people, and the responsibility of what the business, which is the school district, is doing, I mean, there's a lot more moving pieces than personal finances.
Right, I understand that, but trying, when we go out to speak, is what I'm trying to say is, these are the, the visions and concerns people have out there, and we have to be very clear on that, because, um, they have to make concessions, and the reality is, the school district is a commodity of the community, and we have to play by their wishes.
Right, and Paul, I think if we were like DeForest, or even some of our neighboring districts whose fund balances were over fifty percent of their annual budget, um, we're just around, what percent bill, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-five percent.
About twenty-five percent is right at that ideal recommendation, um, for school districts. So, and, and we're just to the point where we don't have to payday loan borrow. That's how I explain it to the public and the community. If you want the district to be in a situation where we have to payday loan borrow and pay interest every year just to make payroll, we can get to that point, but we're not in an exorbitant fund balance. He's saying there's lots of comparisons, and I'm very comfortable articulating that. I think what I hear from a lot of people is they complain about the state having a surplus, yet paying interest on, for roads and borrowing.
Right. Yeah, and in fact, that was brought up too. If every referendum going out this, uh, spring, uh, were addressed to the state, the surplus the state has would cover the entire referendum requests. Which i- is pretty tough, because, I mean, community members are saying, do you know what percentage of your tax roll goes to the school district? And, and they're giving me theirs, well, if they live in town, because there's other expenditures for the city and things like that, it's like thirty-seven percent. Out in the townships, it's fifty-five percent. And, and I'll tell you, you, we're gonna have a lot of resistance, I don't care how we do the numbers, and I just want to prepare you so that we have answers when people are talking and questioning, um, that we can get them to understand from the district's perspective, not necessarily it's exactly the same as a household or yours. But I also understand their concerns is, the less I am able to hold on to, um, the bigger changes it is in our lives, so.
For so long, you know, by trying to find ways to bring students in through open enrollment to generate revenue.
And I think we've done that more successfully than every other school does.
Everyone doesn't understand how that works, you know, that we generate revenue through enrollment, because it doesn't cost us much to educate as well, we bring in for each student. We've tried to do it in different ways, but I think, I think we're just, when you start seeing those numbers, those deficit numbers, we just can't cover them with just the fund balance or with just the students.
Right, look back.
It's a product of us not, it's not a product of us just overspending, it's just, it's a product of, we were one of the lowest spending districts in the state of Wisconsin per pupil. It's just a function of the fact that, you know, I mean,
Everything costs.
Inflation went crazy on us, and, and we haven't had an increase for the last two years. And yeah, we had the COVID funds, and that's personally, that's gonna be sad, but the COVID funds were one time.
Right.
Once we used them up, they're gone.
Looking back in two thousand twenty-two, between April and November, I think I counted, there was over ninety school operational referendums across the state. And that was twenty-two, and, and, you know, at this point for twenty-three, there's a number of that are, you know, kind of at the same point we are, where we're, we're talking about it.
And I wish we didn't have to go to referendum at all, to be quite honest, because it'd be a lot easier. Because, um, I mean, like all this, we're gonna, we're gonna have to.
Yeah, that's first point, nobody wants to.
Nobody wants to do it.
Well, there's.
But we, like I said, we have the responsibility to finance the district.
Right.
And the way it is there, it can be done, but it's gonna, I showed you how you're gonna do it.
Right.
It's negative five percent, that's gonna affect class sizes, it's gonna affect our staff. We could ask them all to take a pay cut, but then we're gonna lose some of our best staff to neighboring districts that have passed referendums. And then we can, we can do that, certainly, I mean, there's, if we have to make that decision, we'll make that decision, but ultimately, what we're doing is, we're not saying, okay, we're gonna spend another six million dollars. We're saying to the public, do they want to spend another six million dollars? We get the same one single vote that they, everyone else in the whole school district gets.
Right.
We, you know, we put it on the ballot, but we're not the ones that make the decision. So I mean, the ultimate, the, the question for them is, do you want us to spend six million dollars more and keep things roughly the way they are, or do you want us to make significant reductions? We can do that, we can do it either way. It's, it's choice.
We have to do it either way.
We have.
Yep.
And then looking at those increases, and I know we will lose, but whenever a year this happens, we will lose some quality staff members with the three percent increase, because CPI is, was, was it eight point one percent last year? There will be competing districts, other entities that we have a very good reputation, they love to hire from Elkhorn, because they want to bring that culture, they want to bring that background and that experience, and they'll have opportunities, and then just, we won't be able to keep up with that. Uh, the advantage, there's pros and cons with seventy-five percent of our staff being in that lane four, their compensation is at a decent level, but, you know, those, the districts for high-quality, well-done staff, they're willing to jump above that, and, and there are some districts that I know they're, they'll be close to CPI on their big increases and so on. And for some of them, they can afford that, if, if your average age of your employees is thirty-five as opposed to forty-seven,
Yeah.
then your compensation base is much lower than what our compensation base is.
But we've always been very supportive of hiring the less person for the job, not necessarily just the youngest person. They're well-known.
Right.
Yep.
And I think that should, should continue.
But, but you're right, Matt, in that sense.
I think from, from what I'm looking at it as, okay, we want to redo, we're gonna reduce this, yeah, we might lose some, we might lose people either way. But the way I look at it is, I'd rather have less of an increase and hopefully that, you know, that the referendum is able to pass, than to have to ask for reductions.
Right.
Or to do layoffs, I mean, I, this district has never laid any more, that I don't, that I know of, I don't think, ever. And to do so would be a big deal in this community.
For definitely a criteria, which, there's definitely, they don't have.
Oh, yeah. Thoughts, other, other thoughts other than me?
So. If, if there were layoffs, this is just outside thinking, I don't know, what would that impact be on the district as well, as far as future bill? It's kind of like the insurance, uh, you know, that goes with the, I don't know, the, whatever benchmark they put you on for. Because I know years ago with Mr. Serpy, we talked about that is, if so many people are unemployed, then your rating changes, and that's an ongoing everlasting impact on the budget as well.
Yeah, I think you're talking unemployment insurance maybe, Paul?
I, I don't remember exactly what it was, but he was saying, you know, like, if three people get laid off, not only do we lose that, uh, portion, but then there's a incurring cost from that point forward, uh, for, I don't know if it was insurance, but some type of rating that then falls back into the expenses that are needed to be handled by the district. So you've lost on both ends. Have we looked at what that would do when we talk to the public too? And, I mean, you, we sure don't want to lose teachers through that avenue, that's for sure. Hopefully, we can, hopefully we can keep their wages comparable, but more importantly is their insurance. We have got to, you know, care for the sailors or the ship sinks.
I would strongly recommend, we've used attrition over the years as those opportunities have come up to help us balance those deficits, meaning when someone's retired or someone's moved away, we look at the position, we analyze, do we need this or not?
Right now.
And we've reduced in just about every single building, um, you know, in staffing. In some other buildings where programs have grown, we've expanded staffing. Um, but I would very strongly recommend, you know, the scenario where it said negative five, negative five, no employee would like to hear that they're gonna have to take a pay cut, but I would strongly recommend and detour any talk of or any scenarios of layoffs, because that creates a huge vicious cycle, because it bumps up class size, it reduces services or programs.
Yep.
Then you lose, you, you fail to keep your kids that are here.
Right.
And you start to lose the open enrollment revenue that's generated. It really creates just this awful vicious cycle that spirals.
Which now their district does too, that's.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yeah. Good entities where they had hard times, they may ask all employees to
Right.
take a reduction in pay or something along those lines. But we've maintained, and this has attracted employees to this district, that we in Elkhorn have never had to lay off a single employee due to, you know, financial reasons, with the exception of the death in heart period. And that's not financial, there.
Right.
There. And so, um, that is that stability, teachers like stability. They don't like, they're adverse to high risk, they're adverse to risk. That's part of why they're in education, is they love what they're doing, but they also like that consistency and that awareness that their job's gonna be there. So any talk of layoffs, or if the referendum doesn't pass, we're gonna have to do this, it's gonna affect class size. That just has a, you'll have good teachers waiting to.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Rather than later, and, and it's not productive. So I've been purged to really be careful in how we work those.
Yeah. But we do need to know that, that that's, you know, that's a possibility, yeah. I mean, we can carry it for, I mean, don't get me wrong, we're not gonna make any, like, rash decisions. I mean, we can carry it for a year and make decisions, if it doesn't pass, there's, we can look at other ways, we can look at.
Right, because the biggest impact isn't gonna be this next four years, the biggest impact is gonna be a year after that.
There's things we can do.
Yeah, we have time, just we're trying to kind of head of the game. Yeah.
Ultimately, we gotta do it somehow, and
Right.
we gotta balance it at some point, it's gonna come to a head if it, I mean, if it doesn't pass.
And in looking at that scenario, it sounds like, is there a, I don't know if you want to do a straw poll, or, say, I know we're not voting on actual dollar, but is there a general consensus on that dollar figure of, I think it's at six million?
Six million right now.
We're, we're at six right now, and where's, what's the impact right now?
Well, I think, I think I'd like us to spend a little bit more time and look at, you know, when you're changing these percentages, and we're all going back to how much it's costing our taxpayers.
Right.
You know, maybe we should have a little matrix done, of how really significant is it? Because when we presented at four percent, the range raises, you know, four and then three and two.
Right.
And that's gonna be part of the presentation, how we came up with the numbers, so.
Right.
You know, I don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot when we don't have to.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I think it's worthwhile for us to just spend a little time together, while we're all together tonight, and just do a simple matrix. I can make notes if you want, which is fine. Um, but the point is, how, how significant is three, two, one, two compared to four, three, two? I mean.
Are you talking about percentages?
Percentage of wage.
Wages, okay.
You know, where are we at right now? Where are we at with inflation, where are we at?
That's listed at three, two, two.
Yeah, we're at three, two, two right now.
Which, which shows these kind of negative numbers, I guess.
Okay, which we thought were powerful?
Yes.
Matt, is that, we still go to that?
We've had that the last few years.
The last few years.
Okay.
Maybe not that third number, or point one type.
So go back down and make it four. Four, three, two.
How many years have we been at that two percent wage increase? It seems like ever since I've been on the board.
Last, last year we were about two. What, what did we do last year?
For wage?
Yeah.
Yeah. It feels like the last six years that I've been.
Well, yeah, I was just gonna say.
Well, no, I'm sorry, not last year, last year was at four point seven.
Yeah, it was a while, but CPI was right around there, two percent.
Right, like it's the last five years.
I agree, it's always been right around two percent.
We look at the CPI.
Didn't we freeze it one year? We did, during COVID, we went into COVID.
Yes.
Going into a freeze.
Right. We didn't know what was gonna happen.
In twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Well, we, then we come back and
We did later.
After, yes.
Yes, we did, yes.
Wages haven't been frozen since, they were frozen when Act Ten first came about, three or four.
It froze the scale, but everybody got a one percent.
So everybody got a.
Yeah, but when you freeze the scale, people interpret that as a freeze.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, we, we learned if you don't, you gotta let them move on. Don't freeze them and just increase the scale.
Can we just scroll down to see what the tax impact is?
Yeah, well, it doesn't, it doesn't change.
No, it doesn't change, because it's still the same number.
It would change that if we changed the referendum.
Okay, right. That makes sense, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
It just changes the deficit number.
Okay, right.
And I don't, I don't, I mean, I know what CPI is, I know what I'm hearing, and what are you guys that are working in private industry, where are you seeing from?
Waging races?
Yeah.
Yeah.
A lot more of the four percent.
Who is this?
There's no rational. I would agree, there's no rational.
There's no rational at this point.
Yeah.
So when we changed the, uh, percentages, the four, three, two, and then four, three, three, and that, all that really did was changed where we're spending our money, but it didn't change how much money we have in the bank, correct? Our deficits would still be the same, and it's just within the internal structure where the money's being spent.
No, it's just those changes, Paul, it changes the deficit.
Right.
The deficit increases.
Correct.
The, the one point two in the first year.
The, the three, two, two was more palatable on, on the deficit than the four, three, two.
So Paul, you wanted to see something added, instead of one point two and one point one, have something added to the third year? Keep going on though.
I, I don't know what I want, I, I'm just trying to understand, uh, how all the numbers jive together and, and, I don't know, just looking at that, what's the total request of monies we're asking? And then how we spend it is what we're, we're playing with. But the total asking of the, the community, I guess, I, I would like to come up with a, a ceiling, where are we? And then figure that. And then figure that out, and then we adjust within the, the confines of our building where we have the expenditures. So right now, it, it's six million is what we're looking at, capping it at?
That's the numbers that are floating at this one.
At, at this, that's what we're looking at, right? And then how we expend it, that's, that's a whole different topic, right? And as we play with the numbers, it isn't really changing the six million per se. It's where it's being distributed inside the, the matrix.
Ultimately, ultimately, it's wages, that's where the adjustment's being made, because that's seventy-five percent of the budget.
Correct, correct, right now, that's exactly what we're doing. But I mean, it hasn't changed anything, I mean, as far as what we're asking the community to increase.
No.
It just changes the deficit on the other end if we increase.
Okay, yep, okay, yep, that's what I was kind of trying to, to, to see, because.
Output can still change, but.
I don't know, I just don't want to see too many changes that really, I don't understand. But as long as I know that the bank is six million, and then what that does to the overall impact, that's fine. But I don't want the numbers to be changing what the asking price is.
Paul, I, I know Bill had sent an email to our internal staff, and I don't want to jump ahead to the two different question structure, but it may be important to look at on this chart while we're here. One of our concerns, you use that reference of, you know, we don't all look like used car salesmen. That was kind of the impression that we got on the complicated nature of trying to explain those dollar amounts increasing over a three-year period.
Yep.
Do you feel we're better off just saying, look, it's six million that we ultimately need, we're just asking for six million?
Yes, that's kind of what I'm agreeing in.
One tax impact, and it's done.
Correct, yeah.
When you gave us the two sample ones.
This is right here.
And then you added the numbers.
Yep.
That was a lot.
It's too confusing when you.
It was like this amount, then this amount, but wait, we're still adding that first amount.
Yeah, it looks like.
And then that, yeah.
And that was the example of, like, I think Oregon's school.
No, and I went through that entire sample from Oregon that you sent.
Yeah.
And there was some great Q and A in there, but, no, there was, there's some great Q and A, because.
Everyone I talked to said the same thing.
Yeah, no, yeah, no, it was, I went through the whole thing during the. But, yeah, the sample two, when I read it again this morning, I was like, you know.
Yeah, that's a lot.
And these have both been reviewed, the language and context by Bear. I had a sentence that I really wanted in, but they said we can't do. So due to, due to two years of a zero dollar revenue.
Oh, right.
Increase.
Oh, right, without any attacking.
Yeah. That we can't do.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I thought it brought some context. But can you plug in, Bill, on that spreadsheet, just what it looks like if the six million were just in year one?
Yeah, I mean.
That'd be interesting.
Okay, we'd have.
Because it builds a little bit more of a potential cushion if needed, downlying, I would suspect.
So if we got it all in one year, yeah.
The impact's right there, but it, it may prolong that upsiness, because it builds a little bit, which could buy some time.
You think that's gonna give us more in year one?
Yeah, it will do that, you're absolutely right.
For, we don't know, it's too hard to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I hate to do projections, I'll be honest with you, you just, you have no idea what's gonna happen. You hardly know what's gonna happen in one year.
That's for sure.
I mean, it's true.
Well, how many times do we review the budget?
It still puts us at a deficit in that, we still don't.
Yeah, because the number is still the same, I'm figuring out.
Oh, sure, but, okay.
It's just like.
We're in the positive.
It does help you fund down.
You put you in the earlier.
Right.
You could change how.
So, my question was, in the question.
Do you want me to jump back to the question?
Can we, can we say, can it be words to say up to?
We tried that.
We tried that.
You can't, you can't say that.
It's a great idea, we tried this.
You can't say that.
No, we can say that in our literature, we can say that on a one pager, but we can't word it in the question.
You can't explain to them if we don't need it.
Not in the question.
Yeah, that we won't take it.
Because I have to follow legal statutes, so we've already reviewed that with Curran's break, and that's the exact question we have. Plus, Jason had some other things to include, and they said no over that too.
So going back, you sent this out, what was the feedback strongly towards sample one?
Um, I'd say mostly just, everyone pretty much said sample one is much more clear.
Yes.
I think just about everyone said that.
Right. Yeah, we need to.
And reading that, it, it, it also has an implication of six million dollars beginning in twenty-three, twenty-four school year and reoccurring purposes. Could we have six million for the year twenty-three through twenty-six? And then go from there? So basically, we're locking a window in to spend that six million dollars. And then after that, it could be recurring or come back to another question or something. But right now, that looks like, for me, and I'm sure a lot of people that would read that, so that's six million in two thousand twenty-three, six million in two thousand twenty-four, six thousand two twenty-five, six, six million in two twenty-six, and it's just a continuum forever. So really, for in the next three years, it's eighteen million.
That's correct.
You're right, but it does.
It's in perpetuity. That six million dollar amount would still keep us well below the state average on spending for pupils as well.
Right.
Would you know, just to get to the state average, we have to add eleven million.
Yeah, we'd have to add eleven million to get to the current state average.
Current state average.
Which will be different.
Which we're not asking for.
Yeah.
The other port, the other portion of the question where there is a little flexibility is what's highlighted there in the bold. And that's kind of catching the purpose.
I like what you have.
We took that from a combination of looking at sample questions, to be honest with you, and put that together.
I mean, class size is a big one, sampling is a big one, safety is a big one, I mean, I think they all need to be in there.
And the disappointing piece, I, I wish we could say expanding instructional programs, reducing class sizes and.
Yeah, which we can.
But it's not, it's just a dollar amount too.
Right.
And those are, you know, that's, those are things that I think we all like.
You mean reducing class size?
Yeah, this doesn't go, this is just maintain.
Right.
I think we'd all like to reduce class sizes, we all like, there's other things that I'd like to do. I'd like to bring the, the four K teachers in as staff for the district. I've been after that for probably a decade.
I would agree.
But the cost of that is five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
So.
Yep.
You know, do we, you know, I mean.
You have to have.
We talked about adding that in the, and bringing four K into our program.
And, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, it's not a lot, but it's a lot to us.
Sure was a lot.
And but the thing is, is that, I've never liked the fact that we, that the four K teachers.
Have to be outsourced.
Have to be outsourced.
It would break stability or a four K program.
Right.
They don't have any benefits.
No, you're absolutely right.
I just, it's bothered me for a long time, but I also know that five hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money in our budget, and we can't just.
But we're leaving kids elsewhere that are going out of district for four K.
Yep.
Because I did it.
Yep. Yeah, I did too.
So there are other things that I wish we could do, and I wish we could say, okay, well, after, you know, we, we really should be, you know, if we wanted to do those things, then we would have to ask for more.
Yep.
It's, it ultimately comes down to what can, what can the community support? And, you know, what can we reasonably ask? Because two hundred dollars per hundred thousand, I mean, there's people that, I mean, a lot of people, it's gonna be a lot of money.
Yeah, it's gonna be four hundred fifty, five hundred dollars for an average home.
And I wish, you know, I wish, but I. Yes.
Would there be, four K is one that's come up for the ten years that I've been here. Would there be for that dollar amount that we need to bump it? That goodwill or feeling, I mean, it's at least something exciting that it's not just.
Status quo.
Spends.
Yep. Is that the number?
I don't know if it was.
Well, it was.
Or was it close to something?
Because we talked even that we don't have the space.
When you actually figure out everything.
Yeah, where do we, where do we put those classrooms?
We, there is, there is no classrooms to put them in the building.
They would have to stay in.
That's just making the teachers.
That just makes the staff.
I understand.
We would have to build like an early childhood center or find a building space or something.
But I don't think I'm ready to pull a rug up on the daycare, the daycare centers either.
But, but that would bring, we would get more stability in our teaching staff if they're district employees, because we have a competitive reach.
Are, are the facilities okay with that? Has there been a conversation?
I've only, I only had a conversation with one, informally, they're concerned with very much being kept full. Meaning, if we absorb the cost of that, too, that they're still getting.
Benefits.
They put a, keeping their revenue that they need minus perhaps the portion that is going to the.
But here's the other kicker to the situation, is the four K program also generates revenue. It is current.
Oh, yes.
It is.
Because it increases the student count.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's, then there's negative drawbacks in the long term.
Right.
I like your thoughts though of adding four K into it.
It's been a long time.
It would be goodwill. I almost don't.
Right, no, neither do I, I think.
But teenagers are a older problem. But for those that do, I mean, we want to be attractive to young families, and we want to bring them in early, because then they stay here.
Right.
Because once they leave, they stay elsewhere.
Right.
Good example of that.
Yeah.
I think it's, um, I don't want to come back next year on another ballot asking for it. We're gonna do it, I mean. You'd like to do it all at once, yeah.
I'm trying to try, but it's a decision.
So how much do we have to add, Bill? Seven hundred or two point one two?
I have not done any detail.
Yeah, we're just like throwing this, I know right now.
Ladies, the last time I. Three, five, seven, I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah, it, it's, and it is, just has to be a kind of a, so I think we're fairly safe with that dollar amount that we're looking at. Two, four, it's about six point five teachers.
Six point five teachers.
Yeah, but so it really depends on what's their years of experience, or what they put on their salary schedule. Do they take the insurance or not? Is it family or is it single, and we won't know all of that. And so we do that, but I do think that here between five to, um, seven hundred definitely, I'm extremely confident that that certainly covers us, five hundred, I think we could probably come in around where we need it to be, if we're looking at that current size of, um, that six and a half teachers. Just looking at that on a full-time expense.
One of the things I often hear is how Williams Bay's, it's a great, it's a small class sizes. But how much does Williams Bay get for, for student?
I think their revenue limit is thirty-five hundred more per pupil than us, almost four thousand.
So multiply that times.
Williams Bay does full day four K, um, Delvin Darian started full day four K. Delvin Darian said six thousand per pupil more than us, so we're spending. And which is ironic, because I spoke to a board member from Delvin recently, and, you know, he said, oh, we wish we had money like Elkhorn. Are you freaking kidding me? I wish I had money like Delvin. Can you imagine what we could do with six thousand dollars per pupil?
Oh, my gosh.
Well, split it out, it's a lot.
This is looking at less than two thousand dollars, this still puts us about four thousand per pupil behind Delvin's. But I think it's a testament to if these districts have this impression that Elkhorn has all this money, yet we're in the bottom ten percent of time per districts in the entire state.
And we look good.
We're the highest, one of the highest.
Well, it just means, we, their kids are, we've been able to do a lot more, a lot less, and we've been creative and.
Perceptionism.
Innovative, yeah.
Like one of those providing kid parents since the eighties, as long as they're not too close.
Anyways, we gotta get to some sort of number, so I don't know where.
Sorry.
I, I don't know.
But I guess where I, I would probably say five hundred or six. I think we could do a four K for five hundred, six hundred, but I am very.
When do we have to have this number finalized?
Well, technically, resolutions need to be approved by the twenty-fourth of January. So.
So we have one more board meeting before we have to.
But I can tell you the municipalities and the clerks are hoping that we would do it sooner.
They're like, yeah, we're for the next board meeting, sure.
Like, don't it, next week? Yeah, I mean, we have a pair of resolutions for the board to consider by next board meeting.
Yeah.
If you come to some consensus.
Right, right.
Paul, what do you think about adding the four K to this?
Well, I, I think it's a, a good idea, especially if we can, you know, convince the people that it's, the money's going to that, um, and, and they know what the, the, the ceiling is. I, I, I think the, the, the key is getting them in early, having them have success and comfort within our district to build upon moving forward. If we miss out on that, we aren't gonna get them at, at any point. So I think it's critical that we do start there at the, the base.
Right, I do want to be clear, it would not mean the four K is in the school buildings.
Correct.
Right.
Facility to do that, but it would be a start at, at least having the employees and. Branding.
It would be another retention.
Not, not the need that you just are a little.
No, we're not, right.
That, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yep. But when we strive to have everything be uniform between the pre elementary schools.
Consistency.
And, yeah, and the pods, the middle school, I mean, it just brings it together.
Yeah, I think it brings a collegial community amongst the, the staff there. So they're all working with each other for a common cause. So I, I, I think it is critical.
Okay, so what, and I'm, now we got. Let's go back to the six million that we were adding and add.
I just added five.
Oh, the point, the five?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Did you add in the spreadsheet?
Yeah, I'll have to see it on the spreadsheet.
You spend so much time on that spreadsheet, I don't want to use it.
I like the.
It's a complicated one.
I feel like I can just close this for now and.
I know, well, my battery might die, so.
It's probably going to.
That would be a, David.
That would be a.
I like.
It's gonna be a little.
So it goes up basically seventeen dollars.
Yeah.
Right.
Per hundred thousand.
What, one ninety something?
We're at one ninety six, one ninety eight, yeah.
Thoughts?
And that is, that was the, what's the percentage on the wages?
Four, three, two.
Four, three, two, can we put it back to three, two, two?
That won't change the impact.
No, I, I understand that.
It will change the.
It'll change the deficit.
So it's a positive.
Yeah, which.
Oh, because of the, yeah, that's why.
But that's a whole other.
But you do have that potential, the board could under levy, or the board could save for that rainy day.
Correct.
On the deficit down the road in year one.
Right. Yeah, we don't have to spend the six point five the first year, so.
No, you changed it.
Or even the second year.
You changed it to six point five, when you said the five hundred thousand, is that per year or?
Yeah.
So do we have to take it up one point five to cover the three years of bringing?
It automatically.
No, we did.
Yeah, it rolls forward, becomes the base for the next year.
Becomes the base for the next year.
It's always.
The five hundred.
So it's six point five in perpetuity.
Yep.
Is this spreadsheet attached to the mill rate, so we can see what that looks like on the mill rate?
It is.
Was that out last time? I have it somewhere, too. But you did, you pulled it out like two, three weeks ago, and I was like, you used to have it right here.
He spends a lot of time on this, too, so.
So it does kick the mill rate in the chin as well.
I mean, it does go up in key scenarios, but if you look at the historical, if you go back five years, it's still gonna be below what it was five years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the other detail, unless there's other questions, the spreadsheet is gonna jump back to the question.
That's fine.
Well, because you would need to add that to.
Yeah.
You would need to add.
And I, I think adding that four K portion into the question, because the reality is what we're doing, or what the school board's doing by voting, whether to go to referendum and how to go to referendum, is you're voting to get the community an opportunity to voice their support or non-support.
Yeah, we're not spending six point five dollars for this.
That's, and that's, and I've heard, it's probably the, one of the larger topics that I've heard from year to year, that usually, though, it's, most people probably don't know that the four K teachers aren't necessarily district employees unless they have.
Right, you think, right?
No, I don't think that.
Oh, okay, yeah.
But it is.
Still, there's a problem.
Probably the most common reoccurring one that I've had over the last two years.
So what's, what's in twenty twenty-two?
Oh, not full day four K. We'll, we'll have to work on the wording.
We'll work on the question, I just wanted to have something in there with that. Because I think we'd want to include that on here.
Yes.
That would be double that amount. Or more, and they don't have the space to run four K.
Okay.
Because you'd have to have the space for the kids that are to be starting there, and the state doesn't give us any money for full day.
Oh, okay.
Well, most of the teachers teach a full day, they just have different.
They have two classes on a day.
Got it, yeah, yeah, yeah. Bill, in twenty twenty-two, do you know what the average referendum was?
From the ninety, from the ninety that you just.
I mean, the highest probably was Verona, I guess it was nineteen million.
Yeah.
There's the high.
For recurring, where we.
For recurring, yeah.
Yeah, and, um.
Yeah, I guess that's.
It's been like five hundred thousand to nineteen million for the average.
Oregon, yeah, Oregon, which is about our size, so you kind of look at, what are the districts on our size?
Yeah.
Theirs was, was it eight or nine?
I think theirs was eight or nine, yeah, because theirs, theirs was higher than ours.
It seems like it was more than that, like eleven million maybe over three years.
Yeah.
In the summer, it was eleven.
Eleven.
Oh, right.
They range wildly, so content like Wood School, only has two hundred students, takes about two million dollars a month.
Yeah.
You factor that out, you're like us passing, dropping down forty million.
Yeah. So Perry was nine million. Um, you know, districts around, I know there's a district east of us that's looking at referendum. I think their, the number they're looking at was eight billion.
Okay.
That's a district that would be similar size to us, I think it's.
Yeah, I know.
But they haven't decided, I just know that's the numbers.
And they're talking miles.
Yeah, they have. On that way, eleven.
Thank you.
It's, it's hard to compare, because Lake Geneva, I mean, it's very unique high school, so they only have a thousand students.
Correct.
So it's, it's hard to, we'd have, the most accurate way to look at it would be the dollar amount.
Per student.
Per student.
Yeah. Well, I'm comfortable with that.
Kevin, you're so much.
Yeah, begging to know, like, Kevin, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, you have, you have, that's right.
I think for me, I think it's, we're gonna add it, this is the time to add it.
I agree, I won't be here next year, but I don't want you guys to have to go back next year and go, oh, I wish I would have.
Yeah.
I think it's a great.
It'd be some good idea that you brought it up.
I mean, I will be here next year, but no, I'm just saying, it's people.
Yeah.
I think it's a good.
Yeah, we're gonna add it.
Yeah, I agree, and it gives, it gives some added value versus.
The status quo.
Yeah.
That's all we're doing.
No.
What do you think, Kevin?
I don't have a lot of voters to say.
Yeah.
So finalize the referendum question for next Monday. Yep, there'll be two questions for the board to consider, one would be calling for the referendum.
Right.
Which will be April four, and the second one will be the question. Which will look something just like this, with those dollar amounts with the full day four K, I think might be worth it differently.
Do we need to go over the draft communication pieces, or some of the agenda of what's going to be back for that?
We have a, a, a committee, uh, that's kind of looking at communication, Jason, myself, um, Jody Esman, Katie Hoffman, and John Ansel. So we're looking at kind of like a fact sheet that we'd be able to share with people, possible boards we have at the schools. Obviously updating our website, and, and we are looking at kind of the work model out of.
Yeah, no, I was.
Yeah.
So we already started working on that.
You see it up here.
Probably information meetings with the civic groups, we try to schedule those.
I, I think just in your reviewing of it, if you have a chance, if there's a question that you think, hey, this would be good, the community would like to know.
Yeah.
Paul, you brought up some good questions there, if there's things, you know, like one on there, why reoccurring and not, and non-reoccurring, which is what Paul referred to, why not have it end in three years and have us go back to that? That's the question people will ask. Um, and I think it's an, an important one, if I felt like that deficit wasn't going to be there.
Yeah.
Then if there was, I guess I would ask anyone in our community, do you feel that the state is going to adequately fund us in three years and close that gap? Then it makes sense, but what, you know, so we can explain that, but that's a question, if that's not in there, we should add that in there. So if there's something that comes up, let us know, we monitor social media, um, very closely. So when I see discussions or other people forward me, I know board members, you've done like, hey, Jason, this discussion's going on.
Yeah.
Then it allows us to add that question to our board and or, you know, if it's open to the public, to answer questions on there. I find it's, yeah, complete transparency is the best approach on it, and answering the questions, and as they come up, I, I've found that's been the best approach.
Once it goes out, we can't, no, none of us can be involved in any, no, yes, or no.
Correct.
So, yeah, the loss is that, so we could just be able to provide, really factual.
Oh, we can't? No.
You cannot be.
We cannot endorse.
You, you can't advocate either way.
Even if we're going off the board?
No.
Not until you leave the board.
Oh.
So you can't advocate either way. You can inform people, but I, I don't want any of you to be in a position like I, because I saw the Whitewater board president sitting there in the Facebook discussion boards, trying to take all these fiery arrows and so forth.
There's a lot of things you don't want to do that.
I have to handle the communication.
Correct, true, right. When you went to the questions up above, does it mention any of like the S R funds? I saw like one-time federal funding.
Yeah, I think there's a question on there, um.
Just so like people understand that like that's.
What is the S R, you know, what do we do with the money, what's happening to them, so.
Okay.
Um, I certainly don't have.
No, you're fine, I just thought the, the one-time federal, and I just didn't know if that was. I don't know how many people are watching this.
I also think as we get on with the community groups to talk about the whole picture, one of the things we have to try to embrace with our community is get them to, uh, speak out to the state government about funding issues. You know, it, it just knowing that the surplus could, could carry every referendum. People have to understand that it's time for them to shake the, the, the rattle a little bit, and get them to support public education at a degree that's, that, that's adequate. You know, and, and, and I, I don't know how we, we get that message to people who will actively send an email, make a phone call or whatever to the elected officials. But when you start seeing the amount of referendums that are taking place in the state of Wisconsin, and that they have a surplus, it, it's time that the citizens of the state say, here's how and where you can invest in our state. And try to get some advocates, not just for Elkhorn, but for all of public education in Wisconsin, to try to, uh, get those funding sources more adequate.
I think the greater issue is the funding formula, it's just, it's a mess.
Yes.
It's an absolute mess.
Yep.
Why should a district five, ten miles away get.
Right.
Right.
More funds per student than another district, just because they were, were expecting.
Right.
Why shouldn't one get twenty, why shouldn't one get twenty, 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 I don't know, twenty-five thousand dollars a student or something twice as much as we do for.
Right.
Why is that?
And produce a way worse result.
Is that?
Right, yeah.
The funding formula is.
It is very broken. Yeah.
But unfortunately, our culture is.
Change it.
But really unfortunate, I just think there's an opportunity here at a statewide level, because typically, having worked in schools for a long time, um, I've seen where proposals have come and gone, and usually when there's been significant change in school finance, is when there's an opportunity to do it so you don't have winners and losers. And financially, there's a chance for that to happen, but I, I think you're right, I don't think, I don't think.
I think both sides need to get together and work it out, and I don't think they're gonna, I just don't see it happening.
Yeah.
But.
I, I would.
I'm not blaming either side or the other, I'm just saying.
Right, right.
Get together.
I, I would never say, this is part of the education process, but I think most of the public don't realize that the state gave schools a zero-dollar revenue limit increase for the past two years.
Right, right.
Um, and then the other factor that happens, and, with me, I, I'm all for property tax relief. But I wish they would just call it what it is, because when they put money into the school formula, but they don't increase the revenue limits or the aid category, and, and then they go out and they say, we just invested eight hundred million dollars in the schools, more than we've ever done, but the school didn't get one cent more on the revenue limit, that's not investing in schools.
No.
That's lowering what the property tax contribution needs to be. Great thing, but it confuses people, it's like, what are you talking about? They just gave you record.
Yeah. But they did.
No, they didn't. They did great property tax, I wish they'd just call it that.
Yeah.
Instead of, look at all the money we gave to the schools, we gave record dollars to schools, no, we didn't. So I, I don't know, we do need, from that communication standpoint, and I, they have great relationships with our local legislators, we can have those conversations, but I get, that's part of the politicking, and, and it's hard, because in education, we don't, we didn't go into education.
Going to politics, yeah.
But. All right. So it sounds like we've got the direction of marching orders, and any final word, words before we, right? Need my high-quality cookie?
Yes.
I'll eat all falls for him.
Yep.
That's fine, I'm, I'm trying to behave this year, we'll see.
All right, well, I'm not hearing any other. So. I'll make a march to the chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes.
Mrs. Igerslam.
Yes.
Mr. Martel.
Yes.
Tom. Mrs. Ray.
Yes.